Ready for me? Okay. We will call this council meeting of July 13th to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting on the unceded lands of the Migma, and we can stand for the singing of "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sun's command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
I don't know, there's still hope. Thanks, folks. Okay, so record of attendance, everyone's here, so there's no absent with regrets. Declarations of conflict of interest, I have one, but I will declare at the time of the agenda item. Anybody else? Okay, and you can declare at the time of the agenda item, of course. Okay, approval of agenda. The recommended motion is that the agenda be approved as is. Okay, councillor Heather and councillor Bowe. Are we good? Do you need to be councillor Hatfields? I don't know. I don't... Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, so town council meeting June 15th, please. Deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Dares. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, committee of the whole, June 28th. Okay, councillor Lesser, seconded by councillor Cleveland. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Business arising, Central District Improvement Plan Bylaw, and the recommended motion under 10A is that council approve second reading to amend the Central District Improvement Plan Bylaw. And the CAO is here if we have any questions around that one? Okay? Okay, so moved, seconded. Any questions, concerns on this one? I know we've done our homework on it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you, folks. Guaranteed basic income, that one's deputy mayor.
So, your worship?
Yep, go ahead.
I just want to be, I want to explain the process, because we don't do this very often, so that we're, we all know what we're doing. So, there was notice of motion to reconsider a decision, a previous decision of council regarding the guaranteed basic income. So, the deputy mayor gave notice of his intention to bring forward a motion to reconsider. So, the first motion that the deputy mayor will make, and if it's seconded, that you'll be discussing, is whether or not to bring the matter back to the table. It isn't about whether you support it or not, it's whether or not to consider it, to reconsider. If that motion passes, then the original motion from around the guaranteed basic income comes back to the table, requires a mover and a seconder, and then you debate that actual, that actual motion all over again. Okay, so we're clear that the first motion is to ask to bring it back to the table, not on the subject matter itself.
Okay. Okay, moved, seconded, discussion, go ahead. No? Okay, all right. So, moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion to, this is the motion to bring it back to the table? Okay? Oh, go ahead.
Worship, on the motion as to whether or not to reconsider, I think that, for me, the concern was that I felt as though I didn't adequately address the issue when it was first brought before council, and I'm not sure why, but I thought it was coming back before council. And without prejudice, I just, I just feel as though I failed my constituency by not appropriately addressing the motion when it was first on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Good, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried? You got the original motion? Okay. She'll find the, the original motion, so that we have that in front of us. That's all right.
So much for getting at her.
No, no rush.
Not great here time on TV, is it?
So, 11D. You just come take over for me, please. Okay. Well, we can, we can come back to it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, if you're okay with that?
No.
Okay, so what, we're gonna, we're gonna find that motion, and we're gonna move on to the new business.
Sure.
And, and then we'll come, we'll come right back to that. So, under 11A, municipal innovation program grant, the recommendation there is that council commits to the municipal contribution of $833 for the town of Yarmouth's application to the municipal innovation program for the Interactive Accessibility Map Project. Okay? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? That's not a lot of money to be, is it? Okay, I'm just wondering why it came through council. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, so we have the, we have the motion. It was a few months back, so it takes, it takes some time to go through the, the agendas. So, Lindsay, do you mind reading that?
The motion was that council send a letter of support to the prime minister, premier, and provincial ministers for a universal basic income for Canadians.
Okay, does anybody need that repeated? Good? Okay, you making that motion? Seconder? Okay, seconded, discussion. You're on.
Thank you. So, first, I'd like to thank the deputy mayor for the opportunity to revisit this issue. A few months ago, Catherine Sweeney, the Basic Income Group of Nova Scotia, requested we provide a letter of support for their initiative in securing a basic guaranteed income for all Canadians. I'm asking your indulgence this evening, because I, as councillor Bell Hatfield said, and I echo that, that sentiment, that I don't think I provided adequate information justification for the motion when it was originally offered. Our presentation policy limited the information that Catherine wished to provide. In her attempt to respect the 10-minute rule, she offered additional printed materials explaining in greater detail the benefits of basic income. So, I would like to take the time now to offer some facts on the effects of poverty. Gender-based violence continues to plague our communities. I was recently invited to participate in a national survey of this topic, soliciting opinions on the issue and ways to move the Department of Justice forward in seeking solutions. A recent Vanguard article reported that there has been an increase in human trafficking in Yarmouth, or at the very least, an increase in complaints and in subsequent enforcement. It doesn't just happen in large cities, and there is a direct correlation to poverty. Another commentary on April 13th in the Chronicle Herald addresses the larger issue of gender-based violence and the lack of political action and funding for keeping women safe in our society. In fact, income assistance levels in Nova Scotia have remained stagnant for the past two years and two provincial budgets. A single mother with two children is entitled to a monthly income assistance of $1,013. Adequate in some support is listed as a key factor in contributing to gender-based violence. The Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives Housing for All report calls for the implementation of 16 recommendations to eliminate child poverty and housing insecurity, suggesting it will have a profound impact. An article featuring the stories and testimonies in the Turning the Tide report paints a bleak picture of society's values, priorities, and capacity for empathy, but also illuminates a pathway for a brighter future. Just a few months ago, the Senate passed a bill signaling a change to the way the courts approach domestic violence. Referred to as Cura's Law, it will lead to a significant change in court outcomes. And more recently, the Mass Casualty Commission made recommendations to the federal and provincial governments that center on a harm reduction strategy. Among those recommendations was a call for providing safe and affordable housing and a guaranteed annual income. In the past weeks, I spoke with a young man who receives an extremely modest disability pension. His living conditions are minimal at best. He's forced to rely on the food bank and similar opportunities just to have enough to eat, and many days, those aren't available. He has no dental care, and when he developed a bad tooth, he tolerated it until the pain became unbearable. At that point, he went to outpatient, and the result was $800 worth of prescription medications. Not only could the pain have been alleviated, but likely the dental care would have been a significantly lower burden on the taxpayer. Mayor Mike Savage, while a member of the parliament in Ottawa, was vice chair of a committee that studied poverty. The recommendation to the government of the day was to consider a basic income guarantee. Now, as the mayor of the Halifax Regional Municipality, he is once again expressing his support for this solution. At the most recent Atlantic Mayor's Conference, a resolution to support a guaranteed basic income was passed with a vote of 24 to 4. So, where does the money come from to support a guaranteed basic income? It's estimated that the net cost nationally would be in the range of $51 billion. Around this very table, we have discussed the challenges facing us in the healthcare system. We have also passed a motion calling on the provincial government to offer expanded mental healthcare services, and all of us are painfully aware of the cost of policing. Providing a guaranteed basic income has been proven to lower healthcare costs, reduce the dependency on mental health services, and interaction with the criminal justice system. According to UBI Works, the cost of poverty is estimated to be between $73 and $86 billion. A guaranteed basic income would lift 1.6 million families and 7.4 million individuals out of poverty, and would have little or no impact on 97% of taxpayers. It offers food security, housing stability, labor market participation, social status, a sense of self-worth, and the hope for a better future. Nova Scotia has the highest provincial rate in poverty rate in the country, and poverty is a political choice. As Mayor Savage has said, we have tried to manage poverty for more than a century. It's time to eliminate it. Poverty causes increased anxiety, illness, and social isolation. We can also expect that without eliminating poverty, there will be an ever-increasing reliance on community resources. We are only too aware of the many initiatives presently underway in our town to assist those in need. The demand, and by extension, the competition for those resources continues to grow. I recently listened to the testimonials given by parents, teachers, and school administrators of the value of the We've Got Your Backpack program offered by the Wesleyan Church. One told of a family unpacking the backpack and the excitement they felt when they discovered a bag of popcorn. A bag of popcorn. The unique feature of this program is that teachers, those who know best which children are in need, are the ones who ensure that those are the kids that get, that are beneficiaries. I'm confident that the educators in this room can attest to the fact that poverty has a direct impact on learning. Students living below the poverty line are less likely to continue their education beyond high school. Many do not make it that far. Those that do succeed are remarkable, but the sad truth is that they are remarkable only because they are outnumbered by those who fail. Let us be ever mindful of those less fortunate than ourselves. How many times have we said amen to that? Tonight in Yarmouth, there will be children going to bed hungry. We can't deny that. We have been asked to provide a letter of support. I think it's the very least we can do. Thank you.
Okay, any more comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So, I'm not going to belabor the statistics and the data, because I think that councillor Dares has done an adequate job of, of identifying what the rationale is for supporting initiatives that challenge the status quo. I just want to speak to it from a more emotional place. I think that we can agree that poverty ends up at municipalities' doorsteps. Even though it is not our primary responsibility to take care of people's services, we, we are charged with the responsibility of taking care of property services primarily, but we all know that poverty ends up at our doorstep. We are the ones that walk the streets of our cities and our towns, and we're the ones that have to deal with the human cost of poverty. And the reality is that poverty changes the wiring in your brain. And when children grow up in poverty, and when families are faced every day with the stresses of trying to figure out how to survive, it changes who they are, and it changes their possibilities. And I speak to this from the point of view of somebody who has lived with disability. And I have been protected from the realities of the disabled community all of my life, first by my parents, and then by the family group that I was fortunate enough to live in. So, there was always food on the table, and there was always the security of knowing I'd be okay. But living in a disabled body has brought me keenly aware of what it means to not be able to functionally take care of oneself, to not be able to go out to work, to physically be unable to provide for oneself. And I know that there are too many people in Canada today who are, whose lives are altered forever because of a, of a disability, whether it's mental, emotional, or physical. And I think that we have to ask a simple question, which is, is there value in human life? And if there is value, if we feel that just the act of living is worthy of support, I think that we owe it to ourselves to be open to the possibility that we could do a better job of how we're managing people in, on the edges of society. And I am not suggesting that I have the answers, but what I would like our council to do is to send a message to the federal government, who is primarily charged with this responsibility, to reimagine, to reimagine what the supports and services are available to people, because I think that the money is there. We have many, many, many programs. The problems are that they're all, they're all merit-based programs, and so there's a whole bunch of people that are at the gate telling you that you either fit or you don't fit, and there are a lot of gaps in that system. And yes, there, you know, there are going to be people that abuse the system. There's people that abuse every system, but the prime, most people want to be able to be productive and to live a life of productivity. That's most, that's actually a right, and when you're disabled, you lose that right, because in, in the disability system, if you can work a little bit, or if you can only work sometimes, you're penalized. And I guess what really brought it home to me was the stories coming out of Ontario last year about veterans who were being given the option of going through the MAID program, the Medical Assistance in Dying Program, rather than, because their circumstances were unsustainable, and rather than provide the supports necessary so that they could continue to live in their disabled state, they were finding the MAID program an attractive alternative. And to me, that is an obscenity, and I think we are at a period in our cultural history where there's rapid change coming, and I'd like to be on the right side of that change, because I, it's not for us to make the decisions about how to do it, but we've got to, we've got to do it. So, that's, that's where I come from on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, thank you for that. That was really good. That, I think, and, and I agree with everything you say, that the, the governments at all levels hand out money. Doesn't matter what color they're wearing, doesn't matter what level they are, they are handing out money, and they're doing it, this is my, this is my only issue, and I'm going to support it. I'm going to support it, but this is, this is my issue, and I have to say it. And, and you're right, you can't, somebody's going to abuse the system. But I, I, I only disagree that if we're going to suggest that this be done, that we keep an eye on the checks and balances that makes it happen, because otherwise, what we have is another, give the money, no, no checks and balances as to who needs, who doesn't need. And I think the saddest thing for me, aside from the children, is that it continues to be a generational issue, and that's, that's what we have, that we just continue, you know, in, in many cases, it's generational, and many it's not. You know, our veterans, our seniors, all those pieces, and, and the children, and we, we need to fix that, but, but, you know, I always say, at risk, I say it, but, you know, I, I wish community services and, and anybody that's handing out, SERB is a good example, it had to go out quickly, but how much damage did it do along the way, because, because it just didn't, it didn't work the way it was supposed to work? So, I, I agree with this, I, I agree with, with the premise. I think the backpack program that we speak about, you know, it works because those that are, that are in need are actually getting the help, and that, I think that's the difference for me, that the people that need it are getting it, and for some reason, our governments can hand out money, I gotta fly, our governments can hand out money, but they're afraid to put the parameters around it, and they need to be, this one needs to not be that. If it's going to help people, then it, it needs to help people. I think about, you know, Dartmouth and the Between the Bridges program, that's, that's just in Dartmouth, but, you know, where they're lifting people out of poverty, and basically young, single moms, which is important, because that just covers the whole community, because they're taught life skills, and, and they're given opportunities to have babysitters so that they can go out and work and, and all those things. So, I don't have a problem with basic income, if we can figure out a way, I'll just say it, that the people that can work are working, because right now, what's happening is, a lot of people that can work aren't working, because it's, it's too easy to, to access the system that just doesn't ask enough questions. So, anyway, I'll, I'm going to support it, based on same thing, like the extra information and, but, man, those, I'll scream without those checks and balances. Go ahead.
So, I don't know if it'll provide any comfort or reassurance, but this program has been tied, tried in Ontario, and it was extremely successful. They found that a lot of the people that they lifted out of the poverty actually went in and joined the workforce, and now they're paying taxes.
Yeah, that's what we need.
So, you know, it's a good thing. So, there's some, some really positive outcomes in the Ontario program. And if you want to know how the universal basic income actually works and how it's funded, UBI Works is a website you can, you can tap into, and it basically explains why this is not a huge burden on the taxpayer and why this program works, because there's too many people out there that, quite honestly, are living in conditions that are unsafe and bereft of dignity. And we have an opportunity to do something about that. Anyway, thank you.
And I agree. I mean, we need to, we need to do what we can do, but with those checks in. Anyone else?
I think you, you hit it right on the head with, when you made the comment about it being generational, and when you look at, like, especially the Asian culture, a lot of Asian culture, they always want the next generation, their, their, their children to, to move on to a better life than they had. And they're willing to, like, parents are willing to, you know, give up everything they have so their child can be in a better position. So, I think part of all of this is, is the education piece that comes around, do you want a better future for your children? Because we do see the generations of, you know, somebody on assistance, their children on assistance, and they think, you know, the next way forward is have more children, get on assistance, and, and then we, and we have communities, or streets even in our communities, that have a lot of, a lot of the same things happening that nobody wants to see, and it's generational, that, you know, in a lot of cases, parents were living there, and now their children are living in those spots. The mental health piece, you know, the, the drug problem that you would have in any community is very tied to the, to the lack of mental health services. But I think the education piece is the most important for, for this, is that they need, they need to help people realize that if they have that extra money, what they can do with that extra money to help get themselves out of poverty and help their children not think of that as a way of the future. You know, in our, in our community, years ago, everybody thought, you know, fishing was the thing you, you would do, and, and fishing has proven really good for a lot of people, but I do think, right now, I think there's, there's still a mindset amongst a certain group of people that, my parents were on assistance, I'm just going to go on assistance and, and live that lifestyle, because, you know, we lived, okay, we lived, it wasn't too bad. So, I think the education piece is, is very important.
Go ahead, deputy.
I'd just like to thank councillor Dares and councillor Hatfield for changing my mind. That's one thing that I do like about this council. When we sit down and we're not sure where we're at, we can listen to each other with an open mind and not have anything set in stone and think that we need to stay with the opinion that we came in on. So, I think, given the information that's been presented, the discussion that's had, I now will be supporting this motion as well.
Go. And when I say, what, I just want to make this, when I say put the checks and balances in place, it, I'm saying it, it's coming from the right place. It's coming from a place of, of what's It's coming from a place of, of what's been shared here tonight, that, you know, folks want to live a life with dignity and all those other pieces. And where they are is not where they want to be. So, yeah, changing that makes a difference. Is there anyone else on this one? Okay. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried.
You're welcome.
Oh, I got lost there. Request to present Parents Place, that council invite Taylor Montombow from Parents Place to present at a future meeting. Okay. Councillor Bowe, seconded by the deputy. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead.
Should we not?
Oh, sorry. It's like, it's like game on.
Just a quick update, I guess. I was, I've been invited to be part of the Parents Place group that's forming a committee to kind of push this through. Parents Place is very well-rooted in Southend in their needs and what's around, and very close to the playground. And they, they have a passion to see that, you know, that gets fixed up and seen through. And so Taylor's recently been hired and is kind of going to be spearheading this or whatnot. But just thankful for those community groups out there that are doing that little extra. And I also let them know that, you know, we were already kind of on it, and that our parks department is looking into, you know, all our parks and what we can do to upgrade. So this is a great time for this to come forward.
Go ahead, councillor.
Just, should we not, I guess, engage Chad and Todd, the parks and public works in that? Because they are looking at the park as, based on a motion that was made last summer, I believe, to do a plan for that park.
Yep. They, we can let them, they'll be at that meeting usually anyway.
So Chad would usually be at the meeting.
Okay, good. Yeah.
He can advise Todd if he wishes to have that person as well.
Sure. Okay. Good. Thank you. The, Parents Place is doing some really neat things, too. So it'll be good for us to hear, the community needs to know. And we need to know, too, because, yes, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Because I, I was asking somebody the other day to put something together, and I was told Parents Place is doing that. So it's really good. Okay. Any more discussion on this one? Go ahead, councillor.
Just, just a comment in reading the letter from, from Taylor, I just, I love to hear it worded like this, in that they wish to partner with us, right? It's not, they're not coming to us asking for everything, they're looking to work with us. And it's that community partnership that's so important and what makes us grow. So I was really pleased to see that.
I think when we, all of us see that word, you know, who wants to partner and who... Okay. Good. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Tender results, RCMP building roof replacement, that council award the tender for the roof replacement to Daniel Rogers Construction in the amount of $22,800 plus HST. Okay. Councillor Heather, seconded by councillor Cleveland. Discussion? Go ahead there, deputy.
I reached out to DiMario today, because if you notice, one bid's almost $10,000 less than the rest. So anytime I see that, sometimes there's a little, you know, light that comes on. But DiMario said that they had spoke to the contractor, and also Glenn, her building inspector, knows the work and is very confident that this bid is, is a good one. So just the kind of flag comes up that's already taken care of, and they did do their extra work to look into that.
Good stuff. Thank you. Gels, councillor Dairs, you good?
Nope.
No problem. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Ten D, oh, deputy, do you want to take, I'll step away from the table for this one. Confer.
So the recommended motion is that council authorize staff to move its employee benefit group coverage to the NSFM program. Seconded by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion on that one? Councillor Dairs?
Yeah. Just quickly, in reading the, the information, it's obvious that that, that staff has done a very in-depth exploration of what's available out there, and have come to the conclusion that this is the, the best coverage for the, best bang for the buck. So just, it's nice to see the thoroughness that went into the, to the, the information in the package. Thank you.
Insignificant cost savings for 2023 as well, right? Yeah. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, do so, we say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Give you your seat back.
Okay. Thank you, deputy. Okay. Tender results, accessible transit bus. The recommended motion airs that council award the tender for the accessible transit bus to Crestline Coach Limited for $436,733.42 plus HST.
Exactly.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead, deputy.
And this is for two buses, is it correct? Yeah. Yep. That's awesome. Good to see.
Wow. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring up, I'd spoken to councillor Dairs before the meeting, but I think council needs to hear this, because this is part of, part of our deliberations internally as staff when we were looking at this. We, we first, and perhaps maybe at my urging, considered going to electric buses. You know, that's, that's the way the world is going in terms of energy, and obviously for greenhouse gas reasons, that was, that was desirable, and we like to be on the cutting edge. So, so that was something that we, we looked at and discussed. Unfortunately, because the buses the size that we, that we operate, they aren't widely available in electric version. There's a concern with, with our operations department around parts, service, so on. And given they're fairly new in the market, concern that we could get stuck with some very expensive and maybe not functioning properly buses. So this is partly funded through a, through a federal transit program. And we got the approval from them to go ahead with gas-powered buses, with the understanding that this is our last generation. This is it. This is the last buses that the town of Yarmouth should purchase that are not electric or some other green energy source. So feel good about that, that the future is brighter, both in terms of we will have new buses on the road in 76 weeks or less, hopefully. And that the next time you're sitting at the table making a decision about buses, you'll be talking about greener technology.
And they're pretty, those electric buses.
They are.
Yeah. I think Heather and I probably would have said, let's, we did. Had all those, yeah, differences not been in place. Okay. So did we vote on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Tender results for the Vancouver Underground and Traffic Lights. Did we have to talk about this? This is different? That council award the tender for the Vancouver Street Underground and Traffic Lights to Aberdeen Paving Limited in the amount of $2,850,552.65 plus HST. I thought we had something from DiMario in that. Okay. Yeah.
Discussing when we get to that point if we're moving seconded.
Okay. Someone move that? Okay. Moved and seconded? You don't need to know who moves and seconds them, because it doesn't matter. Okay? Okay. So discussion. Councillor Lesser?
So I didn't do my homework like the deputy and reached out to DiMario on this one, but there is a huge difference in, in the bids on this one as well. I'm assuming the, the tender had specs and they're going to meet the specs that we request.
So that was one, and the second thing was the timing. I think that's what I was thinking, yeah.
So I can address that. So, you know, the industry is very busy, and the price, you know, the price difference is, is shocking, but I can tell you with some confidence that the, the low bid is still above the engineer's estimate. So we, we used, I don't want to say the firm's name, because I might get it wrong, but we used an outside firm to develop the tender specs and provide us with a budget based on current market conditions. The low bid is above what their expectation was, and is also above the budget that we had allocated this year. Now, the good news is, good news, bad news, is that in anticipation that the market was busy, DiMario had issued an addendum that allowed some flexibility in when the project would have to start. And so by doing that, we think that that may have benefited us in maybe even getting one bid that's, that's within the range of acceptability. And the second thing is that it's, it's going to move construction into next summer. And so what that allows us to do is, because this is above our budget, our capital budget this year, is we're able to make up for it when we prepare next year's capital budget and fully fund. So you can approve this with confidence tonight, that the engineer, our engineer and the engineering firm that we, that we contracted are very comfortable with that price as being very reasonable, although high, higher than we expected, even with today's market conditions. As far as the, the high bid goes, I can only suggest that that was a, a situation where if, if they had gotten awarded it at that price, they would have mobilized the resources, but really weren't interested to, to participate at what is considered the market, the market rate.
Okay. Thank you.
So before you turn your light off, the only question I had, because I had, I, I knew those things before with regard to the timing and the, and the cost, that number, because DiMario was saying it'll, that number will hold over to 2024.
That's right.
Or we wouldn't have said, okay. Because we know how quickly prices have changed in the past couple of years. So it's important that we, we're not worried about those prices going up.
No. So if you award this tender, that is the price that, that you enter a contract with the, with the contractor. And perhaps, you know, that's one explanation, perhaps, why the, why the bid is, is above where the engineering firm expected it to be, is that maybe their, their risk premium that they built in there might be higher than expected. But this is the world we live in.
Yeah. Any more? Okay. Go ahead, councillor.
Just, just to clarify, so this would mean that the work at the Milton Corner would not be taking place this year, but would go into next year? And I'm just saying that for the public, because I think people are waiting for that to happen, and so just to clarify that, okay?
Yeah. And so we'll get that information out to the public. Yeah. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. So reports, council advisory, committee of the whole, there you go, deputy.
Recommended motion that council directs staff to investigate updating safety signage around Beacon Park.
Seconded. Any discussion on this one? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council directs staff to install additional signage regarding our dog bylaw.
Seconded. Any discussion on this one? Not that it's going to work, but, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council directs staff to install additional dog waste stations throughout the town.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any, any discussion, except for the mayor to say that, look how much it costs us, because people can't even pick up their own garbage and dog stuff. Costs taxpayers.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council directs staff to investigate installing smoking receptacles in the downtown area.
Moved and seconded. There's another one. I know I put them on, but wow. Any discussion on this? Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just going to say, I, I'm going to support this completely.
Yep.
We're going to investigate, not going to necessarily do.
Yes.
And I just, I probably echo what you're thinking, and maybe what many around this table are thinking, is that, you know, you, you give, you can, sometimes you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And I find with smoking receptacles that, in my experience, now, we haven't dealt with it so much in the downtown, I suppose, but to a degree we have, and we have certainly dealt with it in other areas like the Mariner Center, smokers just don't use them. And I, I can't tell you why, but I can tell you that often that is the case, and it's, it's a frustrating thing. But the investigation certainly makes it worthwhile, find out how much those, how much of an investment that would have to be. But it is kind of a sad truth in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council directs staff to investigate the issue of the Beech Leaf Mining Weevil, and provide council with a recommendation to maintain the health of our beech tree inventory.
All those in favor? Or any discussion, anyone?
I'd just like to say, I didn't realize that the tree at the old high school was that until councillor Dairs brought that up. It's a beautiful tree, and to think that we could have more of those or save the ones we have, I think is a great thing. So happy to support this one.
Yeah. Me, too. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council amend the schedules of fee policy to waive development fees for established short-term rentals.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council directs staff to review and amend the community asset donation fund policy to include timeline and process, process by which intended recipients are notified for the donation, for which funds are sent to the recipients, and to ensure that annual recognition occurs.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. Go ahead.
Just, just thinking on that, I can't remember if, I was trying to think back when I heard the news, the Shark Scramble has been canceled moving forward. I don't remember if that was something that we were giving money to. I don't think it was on our list for grants.
Yeah, we, we had.
Fisher?
Oh, no, not this year.
Fisher. Okay. I was just thinking if we had, then we would have to reallocate them.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. So there was no planning?
No.
All right. And questions for, does anybody have questions for committee chairs? So I'll start by saying, I'm going to ask councillor Heather, go, go ahead, councillor Dairs.
Not a question for committee chair, but I don't know where else to put it, is, you recall some time ago that the interim manager at the airport gave sort of a one-page update on what's going on?
Mm-hmm.
And some of the positive things happening. And I wondered if we could also solicit a report like that, similar to that, in regards to the marina? Because there's been some really good stuff happening at the marina, and I think it should be shared. So, I'll leave it at that.
You, yeah, make it a motion.
I don't know who to direct the motion to, though.
Just direct staff.
Okay. So I'd ask staff to present a report with an update of the activities at the marina.
Okay. Moved and seconded. So that's not included in any of our reports right now, is it? A little bit is, but not what the detail you want. Yeah. Yeah. And then we'll get it all. Yeah. Good. Okay. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. So I was just going to ask councillor Bowe about industrial commission. Anything you can share there? Or are we, whatever you can say. But if you can't, then...
Thank you, your worship. Just to say that work is progressing on the port file, on the Port of Yarmouth file, and they are actively recruiting members and going through, potential members for eventual transition to a port corporation. It's not, it's just in process, but nothing to report definitively. And I think I reported at the last... for eventual transition to a port corporation. It's not, it's just in process, but nothing to report definitively. And I think I reported at the last meeting that Harbour South will be transitioning to the Nova Scotia Health Authority first of August.
Okay, good. I know that was a, I think you're on that too, Counselor Heather. So that was, thank you. It was a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of digging in. So thanks for that, because there's movement and it's looking good.
We're very excited to think that we have had that role to play in solidifying the future of that facility going forward and expect that Nova Scotia Health will be able to operationalize their vision for how primary health services can most effectively be delivered. And I think it's all systems go, and we have work crews in there now, you know, doing the needed changes that were required. And stay tuned.
Good stuff.
Signs should be going up soon.
So before you turn your light off, I'm going to throw something else in. I understand you guys have brought Symphony Nova Scotia.
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry, but you can't leave Symphony Nova Scotia under the...
This is, it's been 15 years since Symphony Nova Scotia toured the province. And in honor of its 40th anniversary, it'll be doing a provincial tour this year. And here, here is delighted that they reached out to us last year and asked if we would be the local host partner. So here we come. We're looking forward to October the 14th, which is a Saturday evening at Beacon United Church. And we will be providing this community with an event, not a concert. So stay tuned.
Exactly what it is, an event to be celebrated. Thank you for that. So, look at me go through the, look at this. So I know you had some exciting things happen in the past month that we need to share. And I know you haven't stopped, because I talk to the deputy every day. But in the last couple of times, I said, well, just pop in. He said, I haven't got time to pop in, give me a call. Because it doesn't, I know, it doesn't stop. So, you know, it's been like that with most of you guys.
Would just like to say thank you to council. Some funds were given for Safe Grad. I'm happy to say there was 175 students who graduated that night. 160 of them showed up to the actual graduation. And 137 of those kids showed up to the high school for Safe Grad that night. So very high percentage of our kids, and it was nice to know they were safe and sound, and that we played a role in making sure their final thoughts and whatnot of their high school careers was a good one. So thank you for that. Secondly, the Canada Day breakfast. Council did a great job on that. We fed 188 meals that day and rave reviews. A few of us hit it down after to the playground for the Canada Day event that Yarmouth Rec put on. And I would say it's growing, it might have doubled from last year again. For anyone who remembers the back-in-the-day feel, it was a back-in-the-day feel. Kids running around, so many prizes, lots for everyone to eat and do. Grandmothers and aunts and uncles enjoying the kids running around. So it was really great to see, not only just because it was Canada Day, but that community building part's important for the kids to know. And the park is still looking good from the shine that we had put onto it last year. There's a bit of graffiti, it is a great skate park, it's going to go with that. But overall, it's still looking good. And we were, the Good Grub Group was lucky enough to be part of the Sea Fest event at the Mayor's Picnic the other day as well. The parade went great. And just a shout out to Daryl LeBlanc and their crew of volunteers. I'm sure it'll be another summer of great events for our town. And just glad that we're COVID's behind us, and we're really on the way to building community again. So thank you.
The, I'll second the South Park. And I think the comment that we all heard, because we were there, the comment that we heard was, it's back, like, we're back. And we were on our way to being back for a couple of years, but this one was definitely, oh, my gosh, it's back. So it was really, really cool. The parade, the parade happened to open Sea Fest, tons of kids. And the picnic in the park was off the charts again. And I don't think there's anything better than seeing groups of seniors and groups of kids running around together. Like, it just, it's 500 hot dogs. So, you know, I even ate one. Counselor Heather will attest to that, because I don't eat when I go to events. But that hot dog was just cooked perfectly, so it was good. I think I'm going to have a chat with Daryl. They do such an amazing job with Sea Fest. But we had cars pulling out in front of the kids. Got a couple license plates, actually, it was that dangerous, that took my breath away. So we'll just make sure there's safety. And it's not Sea Fest at all, it was just people being irresponsible. And we just want to make sure the kids are safe. So this week also, we'll go through this quickly, but it's just important that we all hear what's been going on, because I, it's just even hard to get ahold of you guys, because you haven't stopped. So Counselor Heather, you had a busy week.
Yeah, it's been a very busy month. This week, we had the Judges for Communities in Bloom in town. One gentleman judge was from Saskatchewan, the other lady was from Sussex, New Brunswick. And so yesterday was the touring day, and they got to see the town. And for the first time, actually, we took them out to the waste park, Solid Waste Park, and, which is outside of our town, but it's what we certainly, is our solid waste park. And so speaking to them at breakfast this morning, I, you know, I asked them, was that of value to you? Because it does take a little while to go out there, and it's a very tight timeline when they're here, to fit everything in. They were blown away by our waste park, I will say. They were thrilled with it, very impressed with the staff there, with the process and the setup. So that was a nice little bonus. Yeah, so we think everything went well, we don't know. We'll find out in September when we go out to Fort MacMarete to find out. We didn't enter into a competition this year, because we were kind of really at the top of our game in terms of the competition. But we asked for them to come to do an evaluation of the town, so that we will have a kind of a scorecard to look at, to better ourselves. And although they did encourage us to enter into some of the special awards thing, so we're going to be looking at maybe doing that, and, you know, and going forward with that. But so, yeah, we're looking forward to the results, and we think it was positive. But I will say a big shout out to the Communities in Bloom Committee. They have worked hard, hard, hard this week, not this week, this month. And particularly looking at our new streetscape that we have. We don't realize it, but there's almost 20 gardens on that main street going up and down. And we have worked every one of them.
You have, and they're not cigarette, they're not ashtrays.
They're not ashtrays, they're used as ashtrays, but they're not ashtrays. So, yeah, a lot of, they were in full bloom this year after having been planted three years, two years ago. And so this year was just like overgrown, and we had to tackle it. And none of us are real professional gardeners, but we did our best. So I think going forward, that's something as a town we need to really look at as, as, you know, maybe we do need to have a gardener for, you know, a period of time. So that's something I'll probably be bringing forward.
So if there's something for the budget for next year, are we starting now, adding it to the budget? Jeffrey? CAO?
Yes.
I don't know if it's now, or she brings it later.
So if, you know, so something like that, you know, Communities in Bloom should talk about it.
We will, yeah.
And if they have recommendations, bring it forward. And anytime of year is fine, it's just, you know, to refer it to budget, and then we have it in file.
That's my thought going forward, but just, yeah. It kind of comes, you don't think about those things until you have to go out and start working, working those gardens and trying to clean up. And you think, oh, my God, this is a lot of back-breaking work. We, I mean, it was great fun, and you get lots of positive comments from the people walking by. I mean, people certainly appreciate it and let you know. But I think it's something that, as a town, we do need to think about, so anyway.
And the other thing, we just had a discussion, because we had a meeting about the signage going over forestry.
Yes.
So we had 10 minutes before then that we snuck in. And the other piece around the Communities in Bloom was that the thought that, I'm going to say it, I don't want to embarrass you, because I know you do what you do. And I got to say that the judges meant every, all of them, the three of them mentioned to me about the walk through town with Counselor Dairs and the facade, you must have explained the facade program to them. And thank you for that. They were, they were still over the moon. And, you know, one of the communities is going to have us, you know, engage with them on how to do that. So thanks for that. Was the fact that, I guess bluntly put, I'm driving down the street or walking down the street, and I'm seeing Counselor Heather and Alvina and the rest of the, sorry, this is the stuff that makes me cry, but I'm tough. I'm looking at them picking up cigarette butts off the, people coming to me and saying, your counselor was in the grass picking out pieces of litter. You know, there's eight women down the street weeding. And this is, this is our Communities in Bloom team. So we talked, it was you that said it, that, you know, there were so many people. I think if we had room, we'd have 100 people on that team. But we, you can only have so many at the table and making the decisions. But Counselor Heather had the thought that, you know, we can, we can get people on board, maybe even subcommittees, so that I know you divide the town up, which just blew me away. You divided up to figure out, how do we cover everything? And you could have a committee, like, you could have 100 people for each area. I'll let you speak to it, but people need to know, you don't have to be on a committee to help formally.
No, no, people, if people are interested, they can certainly approach us, and we can find a job for them to do, a garden to tend, or whatever. The committee itself is 10 people, but we've got room for lots more, lots more hands, that's for sure. And the other thing I'll just add is that the end of the, the last week of the month, our hope and plan is, is that we'll be doing the best front yard gardens again. So we've been given 12 awards to give out. And what we do with that is we do divide the town up into, we look at the south, the north, and the middle, and we divide, we give three in each area, and three to commercial. And, you know, we've been asked about if people can nominate gardens and stuff. And we certainly are open to suggestions, but it's not a nomination thing. It's just our committee members go out, two people go to the certain, the south end of town, two go to the north, two go to the center, and they just drive around, and they look, and make their best choice. And it's not always about the prettiest, it's just about people who have done that extra to make sure that their property looks nice, right? And so we're hoping to be knocking on doors sometime in the end of July and saying congratulations, and just giving out a little gift.
Awesome. I just got one more, I'm putting you on the spot, but one more question from me, unless you folks have more questions. But I know you chair the Mariners Centre, and you take care of all that stuff. But I think the thing that caught me this month was tying economics and youth. And are you, do you mind? Sorry, it's just, it's the coolest thing that I go to, like, it's just unbelievable.
Well, thank you. Yeah. With my job, and of course, my passion, because that's why I'm here, with Ignite, we want to engage youth and give them opportunities in rural areas that they would get, maybe they could get easily in the city, but they just don't get here. And that's kind of what drives me, and it drives what we've been doing. And so it's time, it's coming up, starting on Monday, actually, for our second $100 Startup Challenge. And what we have is, we have five kids between the ages of 10 and 15, some of which are newcomers, by the way. We always try to work with wide reach and give them an opportunity to get some of those kids in. It's a free course. It's not really a course, it's more of a camp, so it's meant to be fun. And we cover everything, we cover lunches and all of that. We give them $100, that's where it starts. And we let them work their way through what they're interested in and form a business of some kind. Can be anything, could be a lemonade stand, it can be food, it can be, I've got a granddaughter who's going to be part of this, who makes dog treats at home. You know, those kind of things, whatever it might be.
I buy them.
Yeah, they're awesome. So what we do is, we give them this opportunity. There's going to be lots of speakers, we're going to take them on field trips just through the three days. On the fourth day, which is next Thursday, they will be at Jim McLeod Square from 11 o'clock through until 1 o'clock, weather permitting. If not, we'll probably end up at the Yarmouth Mall, but we're hoping weather permitting, we always hope. They will set up their wares, almost like a little market, and the town can come. They can buy the stuff, they can, you know, get to interact with the kids. I think giving those kids that opportunity just to interact with everybody is invaluable. Because these days, that kind of interaction doesn't happen as much as it used to. So they have that opportunity, they keep all the profits, they keep the $100, and of course, they use the $100 anyway. And it's a really great program. So that's a fun one. And I'd love to have the entire town come and at least visit and say hi next Thursday over at Jim McLeod Square. It'd be great to have you all here.
And we'll, I always go and bring my whole bunch of $5 bills, because they have the coolest ideas. And it's not, it's, I know it's through Ignite, but it's town-related, because we're trying to, it takes that whole community to raise a child, right? So everything we can do, from Parents Place to Ignite, to, you know, everything in between, the kids that have gone and weeded the gardens for Communities in Bloom, like, all those pieces, they all matter.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a lot of, lot of stuff, anyway. Any more questions for, we good? I know people are saying, it's a nice night, let's go. No additions. Approval of invoices. Moved, seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried, and the date of next meeting? Oh, something else I had to remember. Maybe. You good with August 10? Oh, that's okay. Yeah. What else was I going to mention? I was going to ask something, and you said ask them during council. Oh, yes. Okay. So very quickly, before we leave tonight, because we're going into the fall. So every two years, we review committee appointments. I just want you to give some thought. Do you want to add that to the committee of the whole? Can't add it here tonight. But do you want to add it to review committee appointments? Are you okay with what you have? I know, but I have to ask, because some of you are so swamped you can't see daylight. But if you're okay to leave it, we've got another year and a couple of months to go. Anybody disagree? Okay, all right, we'll leave it then. So Lindsay, don't worry about that. Okay, and data next meeting's August the 10th. So get your stuff into Lindsay, and we have an in-camera? Okay, so motion, motion to adjourn? No, let's have a motion to go in-camera first. Okay?